To everyone in attendance, thank you to our friends in the back as well as our council members, both on budget and finance, as well as other council members. I wanted to give you all a layout of what you can expect over our next few sessions. And if you are a budget committee member, if you could please put your committee cards up, thank you, Councilmember Spain and Webb and Huffman and Soror for having those cards up. But we do want to have the cards up so that we can recognize Budget and Finance Committee Members first. Today, for our work session, we are going to have a presentation from the Finance Department, and they are going to outline our budget process for this year and go through some expectations. We will take questions after that presentation. If the questions go long, we will take the rest of the questions at the end. After that, we have a presentation from Raftellus on the USD-GSD study. We will also open it up for questions at that point in time and then circle back to any additional finance questions that we have. Tomorrow's budget and work, uh, budget work session will also be here in the chambers. Tomorrow, we will be going through the pay study, the proposed pay study. So we will have HR as well as a representative from Mercer here to talk about the pay study. And then starting on Thursday will be our first work session in which we will start addressing the wish list. So that will be downstairs in the jury assembly room, and that will be from four to 5:30, where we'll start going through council members' wish list items. And then next week, we'll continue to go through a wish list, and then we'll start talking about funding sources. The first iteration of your wish list was due today. If you all remember last year, or the year before, or the year before, everyone hates the wish list every year. So this year is no different. We did do a digital wish list, so I would like to thank Melanie Cruz and Director Darby, as well as Vice Mayor Henderson and all of the people that contributed to that, and I hope I didn't leave anyone out. So everyone in our council office that worked on that and finance for, uh, for their input and just thank you all for working on that. The vision was to try to make this process more simple for our colleagues and for council members. So I know that there was some feedback and some questions that people may have had, and you can direct those questions, comments, or concerns to either Ms. Cruz or Director Darby, if you had questions about that. I know that one question did come up about the 4% fund not being a funding source on the wish list, and per finance, the 4% fund was funded at the bare minimum this year. So there was not anything extra to pull from that particular fund, so that's why it was not listed as a funding source. So I just wanted to make sure that if anyone had any questions about that, that that was clear. Also, just as a reminder, this is just the first version of your wish list. The final wish list is not due until June the 5th, after we have our public hearing. So we'd like to make sure that council members have enough time to hear from the community before they submit that final version of the wish list. So if you're still working something out, or if you're still trying to figure out, you know, funding sources, it's fine, the final version is not due until June 5th. And then lastly, there were some questions about the due diligence portion of the wish list. In essence, that portion is asking you, who have you worked with, and have you worked with the department? What we run into at times is council members may want to fund something, but they haven't worked with anyone in the department. So just for an example, and I don't have the questionnaire in front of me, so this is literally just an example, but if you're saying if, if FIRE had on their wish list that they wanted to expand the REACH program, and you're putting that on your wish list as the item that you want, there's no due diligence for you to do because that was on their questionnaire, they're already asking for it. So in that due diligence portion, you can just put that this came from the department questionnaire, as opposed to, let's just say that you're asking parks to do a pilot program in your district, you would actually need to work with that department, make sure that they're on board with it, make sure that they have the capacity to do this pilot that you're asking to be funded, so that if it does make it into the substitute budget, we will know where you are in the process, so we will know that that is money that will be able to be used. So sometimes council members will have like a great idea of a vision that they want, um, they, they want funding for something, but if they haven't worked it out with the department, the department may not have the capacity to do that thing that we're asking them to do. So in essence, the due diligence is just saying, I spoke with this person from this department, and we are working on this program. So we just want to make sure that you're touching base with the department and that you're not blind siding them. And also, if you're trying to take money from a department, you will want to make sure that you're speaking with someone so that you could understand what that reduction would mean and what services would be reduced if we look at cutting, uh, funding from a department. So I hope that that was clear, and we will take questions after the first presentation. And I am going to turn it over to Mr. Aaron Pratt, so that he can begin the presentation. If you all could introduce yourselves, you are recognized.
Hello? Okay, that works. First of all, I want to thank Chair Porterfield for having us here today, Vice Chair Toomes, Body of Council. My name is Aaron Pratt, I'm the Budget Officer for Metro, I've been here two years. And with me, I have Adrian Frame, she's my Assistant Budget Officer. Also, would like to recognize my team who is here, my managers, Ken Hartlidge, who's over our operations, Ken, Greg McClaren, who's over our capital 4% admin accounts, and also James Obadmont, who's our revenue manager. Today, I wanted to go over just a high-level presentation for you all about the budget process, but then also some of the things that went into the budget, and then also some of the constraints. I think that this budget we put together this year for the mayor's recommended budget is a good budget, but we also operate under you all as the Budget and Finance Committee and also the council, to make sure that, you know, your items in the wish list are adequate, adequately funded. We, we are here to help as however we can to get to the substitute budget, and that's, that's kind of our end goal. And with that, you know, well, the agenda we're going to talk through today is very brief, but it's the 2026 budget process, just an overview of what do we do from a budget process perspective, from the mayor's budget instructions that goes out to the departments, how do we work with the departments, the interaction and back and forth over the, those various months to get the resourced information as refined as possible to get to the mayor's recommended budget. And then thereafter, our time here with council to make sure that we're doing the department, we're staffing the department hearings, the work session to, to help you all draft the substitute budget. We'll also talk through just a couple of highlights by categories for, from the current mayor's recommended budget, that's currently in the, the, uh, that's currently funded. And then lastly, we'll want to talk about just some of the structural constraints that we had to work through during this budget process, as a holdover of some things that we had to work through in 2025 as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Adrian, because she'll talk through the budget process at a high-level glance.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay, as Aaron mentioned, I'll be doing a brief overview of the budget process today, just to give you, uh, just, just high-level information of what the whole process that we go through in developing the budget. For beginning in January and February timeline, is when the mayor's office sets the budget direction. The Finance Director normally gets that direction from the mayor's office and submits it, and submits a budget message out to the departments, explaining which direction that the mayor wants to go in the budget, that kind of sets his intent and, and the guardrails that he'd like to stay within. Subsequently, after that, the departments and agencies draft and submit their budget requests to us. Once those get submitted, they're submitted back to OMB. We do an initial review of, of the budgets to make sure that they are in harmony with the, um, with the mayor's office is, is, uh, is desiring to go and, uh, excuse me. It's to make sure that they are in, uh, also fiscally in line with what, uh, what we're supposed to do. Starting in March, the submissions are reviewed by the mayor's office, Finance, the Office of Impact, and the, uh, the Office of Management and Budget as well. It's a collaborative effort for us to, to get those reviewed. Once, once that's finalized and reviewed, the budget discussions are held with the agencies. It's roughly 58 to 60 agencies that we sit, sit and have department meetings with to get in an idea of, of their requests. So once that's completed, the budget scenarios are developed. It could be multiple scenarios, and that, and that's usually handled in collaboration also with the mayor's office before that's finalized. We work closely with the Chief of Operations, and she usually has firsthand knowledge of the, uh, direction the mayor wants to go. So we develop the budget scenarios prior to that being submitted to council. By May the 1st, it's a deadline for the recommended, the mayor's recommended budget that's submitted to council. During this time period, between May and June 30th, council holds the hearings, um, after the budget is submitted to council, council holds the hearings and has to go through three readings, the second is open to the public. June 30th is when council, the deadline for council to adopt the final budget and tax ordinances. And July the 1st is beginning of the fiscal years, when all the services commence after council has approved, uh, the final budget. July 1st, when it's implemented, the service, services commence. And during this time period, from July up to, through next June 30th, is the implementation and monitoring of the budget. And this is an ongoing effort that continues throughout the whole fiscal year, this year round. During this time period, the OMB staff monitors the expenses, make sure that departments have not gone over or are not in danger of going over their approved budget. And also, we meet with the departments periodically throughout the year to make sure that we are ahead of any issues that could possibly arise and throw us off budget during the fiscal year. So currently, the stage that we're in is in between May 1st to, um, June 30th. The budget is currently in council's hands to be reviewed and to make any changes that you desire to make. And as you work through what's submitted, um, it'll be, it's, it's our pleasure from OMB to work alongside with you all in the work sessions, uh, to make sure, uh, we're here to answer your questions and address any further concerns that you may have. So with that, um, I'll turn it back over to, to Aaron, and he'll address the mayor's budget highlights.
Thank you, Adrian. As Adrian was saying, we're currently working on, on your 25 budget, making sure that we're executing it, talking with the departments, I mean, we meet with the departments regularly, monthly, to, you know, avert any kind of overspend or any issues that they may see. This year, we're working under the, the targeted savings, so that's, that was the biggest priority that we took away from the 25 budget, making sure that departments met the targeted savings and that we were working collaboratively and proactively with them to ensure that they had the resources that they need, needed. So we wanted to go over some of the highlights that are currently in the mayor's recommended budget, and these are by category. So in the Public Safety and Justice, um, for police, and this is by department categorically, uh, we, we, this budget actually includes full staffing for the 9th precinct. Um, a lot of the stuff you may have heard during the departmental hearings, but we wanted to make sure that we address that those are the things that are in the current mayor's recommended budget. There's ongoing funding for school, uh, school security initiative, and then there's funding for the full-time D initiative, D detail initiative that Chief Drake talked about. For FIRE, we're hiring 41 firefighters in the mayor's recommended budget, and there's add, they're adding 49 EMS roles and pneumatic units in this mayor's recommended budget. Additionally, um, they're introducing additional behavioral health specialists in this budget. The Office of Family Safety, they're expanding long-term case management that they asked for last year, but because of the funding constraints, we could not, uh, fund a lot of those initiatives last year. Uh, and then they're appointing a public outreach director, and that's included in this mayor's recommended budget. A General Government, uh, under the Planning Department, the Unified Housing Strategy is going to commence, and choose how you move the ballot initiative that was, uh, approved by voters is getting, um, pushed, getting moved forward. So those initiatives and projects and programs that are, uh, integral to a lot of the priorities of council, um, are making, are being funded by a sustainable source. Um, and then with, as council approved, the Historic Zoning Commission Transfer is being executed in this current budget, so moving those staff over and under planning. For Human Resources, um, that's, they're going to be able to have a Central Safety Division investment of an additional staff to make sure that, um, best practices are followed, um, metro-wide. And then also, there is going to be additional FTE for class compensation, um, FTE. So that way, we're on top of, um, those annual changes, um, because they're, they're a department of, uh, they're a, a tactic of two people who are currently doing this, and the, the scope is, is wide for the amount of staff we have. Uh, in General Services, again, this was a, a substitute initiative, um, brought forth by Budget and Finance Committee, that's going to, that's, that's funded in this budget, build it right. And then also, um, as talked about in some of the previous conversations with Fleet, their telematics program is being funded in this, um, in this mayor's recommended budget. For Endot, uh, under Infrastructure, Infrastructure and Transportation, um, they're getting additional staff for enforcement management, uh, additional staff for transportation management, additional staff for special events, and then also expanded right-of-way permit inspection staff. Department of Waste, uh, the new Department of Waste, uh, increased collection service staffing, and then also convenience, um, center management staffing, and implementation of a route management software, um, in which they will be able to tell when trash is picked up and where it's picked up, and be able to have a real on-time, um, display of, of the routes. Excuse me. Under Health and Social Services, Health Department has permanent funding for school nurses. This is, uh, a big, uh, improvement for the budget because of funding was for school nurses wasn't, um, wasn't stable, and we've parsed it together every year through various sources, but this year, the General Service District is going to fund, um, the 135 school nurses. Additional support for REACH program, staffing for family planning services, and then staffing for animal care and control. Office of Homeless Services, they're going to get operating funds for the permanent, permanent housing, uh, rapid rehousing support, um, they're going to get, uh, operation funding for the warming shelter and the day shelter. Under Recreation and Culture, Parks is getting staffing, full staffing for the Old Hickory Regional Center. Um, there's investments in the facility security, um, funding for grounds maintenance, and then addition, uh, fund, maintenance funding for Percy Warner Golf Course and Library. Investments in kneecap funding, uh, support, additional support for NOSA Summer Program, and hiring of additional child libri, uh, child librarians. And then government-wide, uh, so these are kind of things we kind of have to do. So General Fund Reserve with the 4% is funded in this budget at the 4% that Chair Porterfield mentioned before. Uh, judgments, losses, and insurance premiums are funded, not as they all, as they always are every single year. Debt service is, is a, is a first expense that always needs to be funded every single year based on the debt schedule, so that is funded, um, in this budget. The Fund Balance Sustainability Reserve, um, this is, uh, a huge win for Metro, I believe personally, that's, that's my, uh, source of truth, because this allows for us to be able to have better planning, um, practices for the way we use our funds, and when we do use the reserves, if we do use the reserves of council wishes, uh, we have a, another source to make sure that we can replenish our reserves. Uh, and then contractual obligations. So as part of the budget process, you know, we go through and work with the departments, uh, not only during the year, but of course during the budget, uh, department planning process, and make sure that any contractual obligations that they have, um, are funded. Those, that's another one of the first pieces. So we essentially fund liabilities first, we fund those known contracts, known services first, um, and then that is in total, uh, a part of the recommendations that OMB would make, um, to the mayor for the mayor's recommended budget. So from the budget instructions to these, uh, items that we're, that's on display here that were funded, um, we're making sure that we are being very judicious with the money, um, judicious with the, with the funds to make sure that we are sustainable in the end. So I do want to talk about, uh, some of the budget constraints and considerations that, uh, we had to take into account when, when crafting this budget for presentation. So there were some structural improvements that were incorporated in this budget. One, the first one, restoration of fund balance, so we needed to make sure that we restored fund balance to the policy reserve amount, um, so that was another first item that needed to be funded in this budget. Uh, the implementation of the USD-GSD reallocation recommendation by, um, our consultants Raftellus, who you'll hear for, um, from momentarily, uh, and then also permanent, uh, funding for school nurse program staff, which we talked about in health, but that was a, a priority in this year's budget to make sure that, that those staff were funded, and that's, that's, that's another improvement that we, um, took to heart when we were crafting this budget. And then for, uh, MMPS, the Maintenance of Effort Funding, uh, Ether Bridge Funding, and Continuity Improvement Funding were taken into account when constructing this budget. I do also want to say that in this budget also, which we didn't, um, I did, there's not a slide for, but the compensation package, um, that's in the mayor's recommended budget, um, is incorporated in this, um, in, in this, uh, slide deck, pieces. But I do want to make sure I, I, I speak very intentionally about the positions that are vacant currently in the budget. I wanted to speak about that because the current funding for the compensation package, the incremental difference, is not applied to the vacant positions. So the departments will have to use some of that vacancy, vacancies, vacancy savings strategically to ensure that they have enough funding to implement the full compensation package. When we do this snapshot, when HR takes the snapshot of each department's filled positions, um, that's what we take as the budget to incorporate and get, uh, HR's input, uh, input on how much is needed by department for that compensation package. Now, after that snapshot is taken, you know, the next day or so, those positions may go, may get filled and other positions get unfilled. Um, so we allow for the departments, we work with the departments over the course of the year to ensure that they have enough funding for the staff that are currently in their grasp for the fiscal year at any point in time over the month, because we do the, the Budget Accountability Report monthly, is kind of why we do it, to ensure that they have enough staff to incorporate, uh, a compensation plan for the staff that they got on hand. And then also, as the ebb and flow goes from vacant positions, we work with them to make sure that, yeah, you got enough, and once we get to the next budget season, when we get that new snapshot, that new load of the most trued-up position count, that's when we say, okay, this is how much you need at that next snapshot for 2027, to be able to incorporate a compensation plan. So that's all to say is just to make sure that when we're working with the departments in OMB, we're working with them over the course of the 12 months to ensure that they have enough to incorporate fair compensation packages for all of their staff, utilizing their vacancy positions as well, utilizing, um, any other resources, because the, the thing that we do is make sure that they manage to their total budget. As long, if it's appropriated to them, we work with them to make sure that they have enough. So with that, I thank you for your time today, and if there's any questions, um, that I can answer here or follow up with, I would be happy to.
Thank you so very much, Budget Officer Pratt and Assistant Budget Officer Frame. I just want to take a moment to publicly thank you all, uh, for all of your hard work that you all do year-round. I know you all get a little shine and spotlight around this time every year, but the work that y'all do is, um, it impacts us year-round, and you all are, are so hardworking, but also so easy to work with. So I just want to publicly thank y'all for, for everything that y'all do, and, um, I appreciate your very capable hands of when we're trying to navigate a tough budget process. So thank you, uh, um, Budget Officer Pratt.
Thank you.
I'll start off with a few questions, and then I'll go to Vice Chair Toomes, then we'll go to committee members, uh, followed by anyone else that may have questions. Um, and again, we want to make sure that we leave time for our next presentation, um, in the event that questions run over. Um, my first question, um, Mr. Pratt, can you talk to us a little bit about, um, the revenue that we get from a penny versus a net penny? But can you talk to us about for every penny of our property tax, how much revenue does that bring in that we can spend as far as like operations? I know some of that has to go towards, um, like debt services and things of that nature. And then also, uh, in reverse, like if we were to, uh, reduce the tax rate by a penny, how much money would that then, um, lower our operating budget by?
Yeah, so the, the gross penny, I'll just talk about the gross penny first, is $7.2 million. The net penny, after we do the, uh, the reserve stabilization and stuff like that, is about five, five or so million dollars. So the net penny is what, you know, the, the difference between the net penny and the gross penny is what you have to be able to, uh, reallocate to different things. The second part of the question, sorry.
If we, um, reduce the proposed tax rate, let's just say by a penny, how much money would that, in, in essence, like reduce the operating budget by?
So if you reduce it by a penny, uh, that'll, that'll be $7.2 million.
The $7.2?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would say that we need every single penny we got.
Understood, but in the event that we're able to, um, you know, make changes, we just, I just want to make sure that that information was, was out there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And then my next question, um, and if you need to get back to me on this, it's okay, because you may not have this like at your fingertips, but when we talk about judgment and losses, over the last, let's just say, five years or so, what is the lowest amount that we've spent out per year on judgment and losses, and what's the highest amount that we've spent out on judgments and losses? And is there average amount that we're spending on, on J and L? So I want to, I want to think about how we're funding that and just, I know that you all make sure that we fund it at an appropriate level. I also know that, um, your job is to, um, make sure that we have, uh, that it is very abundant, that we have everything that we need, and as council members, sometimes we like to cut it a little bit closer than, uh, you all are comfortable with. So I just want to make sure that we're talking about how much money is, has been used in that fund over the last few years.
Yes, um, thank you for that question. I'll have to get back to you with that, uh, with that answer, because that'll take the actuals, and we'll run it for three to four years, if that's okay?
That's perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so very much. And then I'll go to, uh, Vice Chair Toomes, you're recognized.
I'm sorry, I think, um, Finance Director.
Director, you are recognized. If you could introduce yourself.
Hello, Janine Reed, Director of Finance. I just wanted to give you a little bit of information as well as to how the, those insurance funds and judgments and losses funds are actually funded, and how we come up with what is needed in that. We actually use a very analytic approach. We look at the anticipated insurance premium cost, estimated deductibles, and then we actually use actuarial information for the funding targets. So I wanted to just give a little bit of information about that, that it's not just a, oh, we think this may be good. There is actually some actuarial evaluation that is used in the calculation in the funding of those funds. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that context. So I think that's very helpful for us as we're looking for, um, as we look at like funding sources, it's very helpful to hear the methods of the madness around why there is that amount in the fund, so thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Toomes, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I have a few questions, so, and thank you for being here, um, Mr. Pratt and Ms. Frame. For the fund balance restoration, so in the proposed fiscal year 26 budget, we're doing a lump sum amount to bring the fund balance back up to the, the 17%. In the fund balance policy, it says that if we go below the, uh, targeted, um, minimum for those funds, that the council implements a 36-month plan to replenish those funds. If there's a hardship to the council, then that could be extended to 60 months. Why is there no 36-month plan for the council to, um, consider, uh, as opposed to doing the lump sum restoration? And I know a large part of that is coming, is, has, that amount has been factored into the tax rate, so why is that?
Thank you for that question. And I'll lean into, uh, Director Reed if she wants to add any more context, but, uh, right now, in the current year where we're doing the reassessment, this is the opportunity to be able to, um, restore our reserves, and I do want to make sure that I, I convey as well that this is for, this is the three-year plan. So this restoration for a three-year plan plus sustainability will get us through the next three years to the next reassessment period. So to be able to fund those reserves now without having to have additional impact in those future years was important, to be able to make sure that then the sustainability reserve can kick in if we do need to use those reserves in those future years, year two, and then year three, which would be another ratio year. So we want to make sure that we, we did, we did it upfront, and we were, uh, very transparent about the reserve being there, uh, making sure that it's, it's funded from day one, 7-1, um, and, but then also being able to utilize the sustainab, the, the fund, Reserve Sustainability Fund, if there is a need to go, um, if there is a need to go for some, if anything happens. if there is a need to go, if there is a need to go for some, if anything happens in those years that we weren't planning for.
Thank you for that. But in, in thinking about, because that amount of money is, is baked into what's been calculated as an appropriate tax rate per the mayor's proposed budget, the council still has the option to choose to do a 36-month plan as opposed to this upfront lump sum payment, correct?
Director Reed, you're recognized.
Hello, Janine Reed, Director. So there, if you actually look at the fund balance policy, and I'm happy to recirculate the fund balance policy, there is only a certain language in that fund balance policy that would allow us to restore that over a period of time. And generally, it's for something very unforeseen, highly unusual. It's not in the normal course of business in terms of fund balance restoration. So I'm happy to recirculate the fund balance policy and highlight that specific language in there. But that's why we are doing fund balance restoration all in one year, because it is per the policy. But again, I'll be glad to highlight that language and circulate that.
And Chair, I've read the policy as of like today. So I, I would like a, a legal interpretation of that, because that's not how I'm reading that policy. It's the reason for using money out of the fund balance is the unforeseen, that, that language. But in terms of replenishing those funds, it says the council implements a 36-month plan. So I, I would like a legal interpretation instead of going back and forth right now. As an attorney, that's not my interpretation, but I understand that other people may interpret it differently. So if I can get something from either Metro Legal or our legal counsel, that would be great.
Duly noted, thank you, Vice Chair.
Also, for judgments and losses and the 4% fund, can we get the actual calculations? So Director, I'm gonna say Director Janine.
Director Reed.
Director Reed. That you use like actuarial calculations, some of us like to look at the numbers. So, but we can see the actual calculation, particularly with judgments and losses, because currently in that fund balance for judgments and losses is $15 million. And I don't recall what is proposed in the fiscal year 26 budget, but it's going to be money added on top of that 15. So if we could see the actual calculations supporting why that 15 plus the amount that's proposed in the budget is appropriate. And also, we argue about the 4% fund every year. If we could see the actual calculation of how that amount has been calculated and what the actual 4% threshold is, that would be appreciated as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Next, we have Councilmember Swora, followed by Councilmember Evan Segal. Councilmember Swora, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you all for being here. It's interesting that Councilmember Tooms basically followed my line of thoughts and my questioning. And so we've been looking for money to steal for a long time, so we can tell where we're looking. I just asked the same question about the property loss, which went up about $11 million this year. And so for the same reason, just as the severing showed and the judgment and losses, if we can have the actual calculation and also the actual expenses for prior years, maybe the last two years to actually show that much we're actually spending, not, not just what we're putting aside, I think that will, that would help us a lot. My other line of thought is on the fund balance restoration also. The, the deficit, was it due to decreasing revenue or did we overspend? Do we know what created that deficit? Or is it a combination of both?
Well, I can tell you it's not overspending, because we, we monitor that very closely. But our revenues haven't been performing the way that we anticipated them to perform. So especially property tax categories. So we're, we're continually monitoring our revenue intake, but it's a projection. And when, and we do a lot of work to make sure that we do an act, almost as accurate as possible projection, given the data we have at the time when we, when we do the budget in February, March. But the revenues just haven't been performing in the property tax category.
Thank you. And so the next question actually on that is also for the restoration and all the other calculation, these were estimated amounts based on the revenue that we have at the point where we did the budget. Now we've had about a month or two additional revenue come in. And so my questions are, one, is the current receipt of revenue tracking with that estimated collection that you have, is it still the same? And then what happens if revenue comes in more than what you had conservatively projected to receive? What happened to that fund balance restoration?
So I'm sorry, I do have a question. Are you, so when the revenue come in and it's hard, are you talking about fiscal year 25 or 26?
I'm talking about 25, because it's, it is, the, the restoration is on 25 budget, right? We, that's where it is, so that's what I, yes, on 25.
So currently, we're, we're tracking the revenue to be at a, at a, at a lower amount than what we anticipated, but we're tracking it to be on target with that amount. I don't have that amount off, on hand, but any amount that's collected above normally, the, the revenue is returned to fund balance. So I, I believe in 2023 or so, there was a, a revenue supplemental that was conducted because the revenues were outpacing what even our projections were. So those funds were additionally approved to be used by council for additional things. So those were the good years. Now that's more normalized, so our revenue, especially again in the category of property tax, has been plateauing and we're tracking to make sure that we have enough revenue to cover our expenditures, which we will. But, you know, we, with a target to save, naturally, we expand a, a good portion of our expenditures, but things happen, timing of contracts, timing of procurements and things like that. You know, some things fall into the next year or, you know, some departments can do things more creatively. So we always manage, we always make sure to manage that revenue exceed expenditures. And that's, that's how we ensure that we, we have a balanced budget.
Okay. Before we finalize the budget, the, all of it, would we be able to have a number that tells us? Because I know that, yes, every year, we always project conservatively and every year, we always have more and it goes right back into the fund balance. That happens all the time. And so, but for this time, as we, as we're getting closer and we're looking at all the regular places that we typically look and not there anymore. And so would we be able to, to see and update a revenue projection before this is finalized?
And we could put something together. I, I do also want to just make sure when we're talking about this, we're talking about the timing of the revenues, because state taxes are usually two months in the rear, it's collected here, the property taxes as a month. So we could put something together as, as we stand to make sure that we can provide you an estimate, estimated projection of revenues and expenditures.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Swora. And Mr. Pratt, can you clarify one thing? Because you, you mentioned the revenue and property taxes plateauing. Is that due to appeals or do we know why there's a plateau in that revenue?
So i- i- it's a combination of a couple of different things. Appeals would be one of those and those are, those are paid out during the current month that, you know, it's actually put, are actually submitted to the trustee's office and we have to take that as a, an additional amount decrease from the revenue projection. But we're continually to look into that, to be honest, because we have seen slow payment this year for some reason and we're continuing to investigate why that is. But again, overall though, the revenue target that we have for property tax is a good target. We're just investigating what else is happening in the, in the economy right now to lead to some of those categories that we would normally have expected to be higher, to be a little bit just more normal.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Next in queue, we have Councilmember Quinn Evan Segal. Are there any other budget and finance committee members that seek to be recognized? Okay, seeing none, any non-committee members? I saw Councilmember Stiles, Councilmember Ellis. Okay, great. And then after Councilmember Ellis, we're going to go ahead and move to the next presentation. And if there are additional questions, we can circle back to them. Councilmember Evan Segal, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Councilmembers Swora and Tooms ticked off a good number of my questions. I, I know y'all track things closely. I know you're not in the assessor's office, but do you have any idea of how many appeals have been filed so far?
I do not have that information, I'm sorry.
Do you know when we sort of get an idea of sort of the percentage of appeals that have been filed?
You would have to work with the assessor's office on that, because they handle that portion of the process and we just take information that they get from, you know, the reassessment, I'm sorry, the assessment valuation and take that into account as a collection percentage. But we, we don't really know in OMB the amount of appeals that have gone through for, you know, the fiscal year or even the, we can probably get the pending appeals, but we don't have any information about how many appeals are actually being submitted.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Evan Segal. Councilmember Stiles, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Chair. My question is in regards to, as we all had to turn our budget wish list in today after a holiday weekend, very last minute, very disorganized. And then, of course, the dropdown menu didn't have all of the funding sources we were accustomed to finding and then we had no one to ask in time. So for the 4% fund, as we have always been able to touch, will that be something that is possibly adjusted in providing the numbers for Councilmember Swar, Councilmember Tooms, that that money can be freed up so that we can use it for some of the items that we have on our budget wishlist? Because I didn't know where to even put that on the form, hey, I would like to use this if it's possible. And I did ask Director Darby to send out some information today, but I, I didn't see it.
Thank you, Councilmember Stiles. We addressed that at the beginning of the meeting. So the 4% fund was funded at the lowest amount, so there is not any money that could be taken from the 4% fund per Director Reed. And then I also wanted to address, we actually gave an extension on the wishlist, because the first version of the wishlist was due last week and some council members did ask for an extension to give more time, which is why we gave the extension to give people time over the, the holiday weekend. The final version is not due until June the 5th, but we did want to give council members time, because the initial version was due on last Thursday at close of business, if I believe that was correct. But we did want to give that extension to honor the request of colleagues for more time. So we know that, that, that schedule is tight every single year. You know, with the, with the wishlist, it's a tight schedule every year. So we do the best that we can to accommodate council members so that we collectively have as much time as possible. But we also have to allot enough time for our council staff to collect the items that 40 people are presenting, because we need those items available for us to discuss at the first work session in which we'll be discussing the wishlist, which will be on Thursday. Did you have any other follow-up questions?
I'm not sure if it was, I'm not sure if it's actually a question. I didn't have really concern about the wishlist schedule, more so getting a brand-new wishlist that we didn't get to go over the day before it was supposed to be due and then getting an extension. So that more, so I guess I'm asking for next year, if we're going to use this same form or some version of it, if we can actually have a session where we can ask questions and we know what's going to be in there and know that departments are all named the same versus this year, some of them have been renamed, that would be really helpful. And I'm hoping that next year, we don't have to, like me, submit 15 budget wish lists, because I had to do, we had to do individual ones. So if we're submitting for a caucus, maybe there's a, a form that can be created where we can put all the things that we want on one and then go back to doing individuals. So I wanted to get that out there in the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that feedback and I'm sure that was heard by council staff. We did look at trying to make it one wishlist, but the way that the form works, it only allowed you to submit one, each form was one request. So we did look to see if that could be consolidated and that was a limit to technology. So and, and what we kind of, what I shared at the beginning of the meeting, like the, the purpose of the wishlist was to make things easier for council members. So people didn't like the wishlist last year or the year before, the year before. So we understand that, you know, people, it, it's a tough thing to do and very thankful that our council staff worked so hard on it and tried to make it easier. But we will continue to take the feedback and try to continue to make improvements. So thank you for that feedback, Councilmember Stiles. Councilmember Ellis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for recognizing me, even though I'm not on the committee. I have a couple of questions and I'll try to make them concise. And I'm a bit old school, so I have the printed wishlist form that I intend on submitting. And I wanted to clarify, the date on that said the deadline is June the 11th, but you said June the 5th. Could I just get clarity on which, which date?
There's not a printed version of the wishlist. The only wishlist that we have is the digital version. So if you're looking at a printed version, that might have been last year's date or last year's wishlist, but we don't have a printed version this year.
It was a, it was a Word document that was sent out and we could turn it in to Maria?
I have no idea what you are, that was from last year. So I'm hearing from. Yeah, there, there wasn't a Word version that was sent out for this year. We only did the digital version this year.
All right. And, and what date is that? What's the final deadline, the?
June the 5th.
June the 5th, okay, cool. All right, thank you.
And we have two more real quick questions. Vice Chair Tooms, I'll come back to you. We'll do Councilmember Webb and then we'll do.
Oh, that wasn't my only question.
Oh, I'm so sorry, my apologies. Go ahead, Councilmember Ellis.
I'm going to try to be concise on the other ones. So I just wanted to know, I guess this is more of a fundamental question. When it comes to the judgments and the judgment losses, why can't those amounts be deducted from, you know, the respective department?
Mr. Pratt, I will recognize you unless someone, unless you want someone else to take that.
No, I'll, I'll take that. So what happens is that legal works with their actuaries, as Director Reed says before, to understand the amounts that needs to be budgeted for all of Metro. Those are metro-wide kind of costs. So the metro-wide costs are kind of budgeted at the admin amount. I think the current process is that it doesn't get directly billed to the departments in that sort of manner, it's like, you know, that amount being billed to that department and then you'll see the request from the department for that amount. It's, so it's more centralized. It, it's, it's the same output, but having that control at the admin level for those government-wide costs allows us to understand how much as a government we're, we're paying for those kind of services.
I see. So let me ask it a different way. So if we have a water, a water truck, a water employee running to the back of someone and we get sued and we settle for $100,000, why can't or can that $100,000 be deducted from the operating budget of Metro Water? And if not, why?
So water is a special.
And I'm still new, so.
No, no, yeah, no. I'm trying to think through it too, like how to explain. So let's, let's say a police car. Let's say a police car got hit and, you know, we settled for $100,000. Police wouldn't pay that, because again, we hold the insurance, Metro holds the insurance. So as Metro, we have to pay for that claim or pay for the resolution of that claim, so the $100,000. So we, we don't ask departments to pay for their individual mistakes. We insure them because we know that mistakes happen.
Perfect, thank you. All right, there's two more questions, real basic. Do you know, what's the, the collective number of FTEs that's being asked for, for, that will be designated as Choose How You Move FTEs? I noticed that they're spread across departments. If you don't have a number, if you could just follow up with me and let me know? So last question, more direct.
I'm sorry, Councilperson Ellis. Amanda Deaton-Way may have that answer for you.
Okay.
You are recognized.
The number, you want the total employees for chime that are allocated in contingency in the budget, is that correct?
Across all departments.
Okay. Off the top of my head, it's 29 in the police department and it is a number, it's four in planning and it is, I believe, I don't want to give you the numbers on the other view, but I can get that to you pretty quickly. It's just, I don't want to misspeak it, but I can give it, give it to you pretty quickly.
Yeah, thank you for that. So, so just to follow up, I noticed there were like four or five employees for the mayor's office for chime and then 29 in MNPD.
That was for planning. I want to give you the, the specific number for the mayor's office if I can.
Okay, gotcha. All right, so going back to my question. So the 20, so under MNPD. So the 20, so under MNPD, there are 29 FTE positions at 3.5 million for the Choose How You Move program. And as I understood it, after doing diligent, my due diligence, is that those 29 FTEs would be designated for Transit or for the WIGO Transit Authority. So why are those positions under MNPD? Why are those monies in the MNPD budgeted, not from the Transit Authority? And that's my last question.
So the money is designated to MNPD because they're the certified police officers who will enact the program. WIGO doesn't have certified police officers. And since we are Metro, we have police and sheriffs up it. It made more sense to utilize our resources through MNPD to provide that service. So giving MNPD access to that funding source would allow for us to, you know, be more efficient.
So just to clarify, so we'll have 29 uniformed officers designated to Transit?
Choose How You Move Transit, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellis. And Mr. Pratt, I have just a quick follow-up on that. Could the cost for those 29 officers that's going to MNPD, could that be like reimbursed through CHIME, through the money that we're getting through Choose How You Move? Like, could that, could we fund that through the CHIME initiative as opposed through the operating budget?
Yeah, and that's where, sorry, yes, that's where it's funded. It's just in the MNPD's budget. Like, a lot of departments have multiple funding sources. That's just one of the funding sources identified for MNPD for those FTE.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Webb, then Councilmember Tooms, and then we'll transition into our next presentation. Councilmember Webb, you're recognized.
Okay, so you took my question about pulling the money from the revenue, the sales tax on Choose How You Move. My other question is, you keep referencing targeted savings, okay? So was there a certain amount that you gave each department to save? And then how does that correlate with the amount last year that they saved? And then we gave it right back to them. I just want to know where y'all's thinking was on that.
So in order to balance this year's, this current fiscal year budget and still do all the wishes of council through the substitute, we had to incorporate some sort of metric or initiative to make sure that we have enough savings or enough revenue, which we didn't have revenue, to balance the budget. So the targeted savings was introduced and accepted to ensure that every department would have a targeted amount based on their budget of 1.41% for a reduction, or not a reduction, I'm sorry, a savings pool that we still gave them the whole budget. And then now my team is working with them to ensure that they hit that target, which is why it came to be savings target. So we gave it back to them this year because it's hard for departments to hit that 1.41%, especially smaller departments. So in order to make sure that they have enough funding to have a continuity budget, we told them, you got to request that back this year because you do need it. Now, some departments said, hey, we were actually efficient. We don't even need it anymore. But more departments needed it, and that means that they have more resources to do the output that they're here to do.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Vice Chair Tooms, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I am interested in the portion of property tax revenue that is due to new development. So looking maybe fiscal year '22 through '24, how much of the property tax revenue we brought in as a city was due to new development? If I could get those numbers.
You said '22 through '24?
Twenty, yes, so '22, '23, and '24.
Two, three.
I'm hearing in the gallery behind me the projected revenue for new development for fiscal year '25.
Thank you, Vice Chair Tooms. And with that, colleagues, if there are any additional questions that you all have, we will table them until after the next presentation. Again, Budget Officer Pratt and Assistant Budget Officer Brian, thank you so much for your hard work. And we appreciate the due diligence that you all will do to get these questions answered for us. And again, thank you so much. And with that, we will transition into our next presentation. Thank you. All right, colleagues, we're now going to begin our next present- we are going to begin our next presentation. And we will turn it over to Amanda Deaton-Way, who's going to kick us off. You are recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Today, we have with us Melissa Levin and Mike Burton from Raftellus. They have been working with us for now what is a couple, three years on the USD-GSD study. And they're here to present their findings and answer brief questions after their presentation. And I'll leave it to you, Melissa.
So good evening. All right, perfect, perfect. First of all, committee members, councilmembers, thank you all for allowing us to be here with you all tonight. As Amanda said, I am Melissa Levin, and I'm here tonight with Mike Burton. We're with Raftellus. And we are excited to be here with you all tonight to discuss the results of the USD-GSD Cost and Revenue Allocation Analysis.
What do you, you want the whole thing?
We've got about a 15- to 20-minute presentation. And then we're going to, after we finish our presentation, we're going to entertain a few questions from you all. But before we get into the meat of the slides, just a kind of a couple of kind of keynotes. What we're going to be presenting is based on fiscal year '25 budget data. That is the fiscal year that we are currently in. These numbers really are just really to provide a conceptual basis for observations. It is revenue-neutral. So what we're looking at, when you're looking at the slides and the numbers that we're going to be presenting on our slides, we're looking at what happens if we shift costs around and how revenues are kind of shifted to recover those costs. But it's revenue-neutral. So any implementation of these results for fiscal year '26 budget and property valuations would have different costs and revenues as the new budget is developed with program changes, cost escalations, property value reassessments, and the use of fund balance. So just keep in mind, as we're going through the slides, it is fiscal year '25 data, not fiscal year '26 budget data. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Burton.
Thank you, Melissa. Is mine on? Okay. And I'm sure members of the committee and councilmembers, as Melissa said, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm going to go right on the end of this presentation, talk a little bit about the landscape of who you are and what we were facing when we came in to do this study. Metropolitan Davidson County was created in 1963. It combined the city of Nashville and the surrounding Davidson County. You ended up with two districts in the consolidated government, the urban service district, which is the former city limits, and the general services district, or GSD, which is the entire county, including the properties that are in the urban service district. There's an overlap there. As you can see there, the subset, the light gray, is the GSD properties that are outside of the USD, although all the properties within the USD are also in the GSD. They also pay the GSD taxes. The services that have been provided have evolved to meet the needs of the consolidated government over the years. And many services are currently provided in both districts. Key observations about district taxation. Property owners in the USD pay property taxes into both the USD and the GSD general funds. It's a key element to understand. When you look at the graphical representation, much as the last graph showed the actual boundaries, this is a graphical representation. It shows the USD and the GSD. And the light blue is where the GSD taxes apply. And the darker blue is where both the USD and the GSD taxes apply. So those properties in the USD pay a combined rate of the GSD and the USD tax. This is a key fact to understand. Approximately 76% of the total assessed property values of the USD and the GSD together are within the USD. It's based upon the fiscal year 2025 data. This is a key statistic to understand as it relates to property tax because from a cost allocation perspective, the USD pays 100% of the costs allocated to it and 76% of the costs allocated to the GSD. So that's a key thing to look at when we're talking about the reallocations that we're recommending here. Property owners in the USD pay property taxes, as we said before, to both the USD and the GSD general funds. In the shaded area there, both the USD and the GSD pay those rates, the general fund, the debt service, the school funds, and the MPS debt service fund. Only the USD pays those rates below. And the USD pays a tax rate of 0.33 higher or 11% higher than the GSD in FY 2025. You can see the USD rate to the right is 3.254, and the GSD rate to the left is 2.922. Fundamental considerations with regard to this analysis. You asked the question, one might ask the question, what services do USD property owners receive that only benefit the USD? And there are some. There's two unique USD services that we identified, street lighting and solid waste. Those benefit only the USD properties and not properties within the GSD. And they're properly allocated then 100% to the USD. And the next question is, are the costs equitably distributed between the districts? Our observations would suggest that cost centers with equal level of service between the USD and the GSD, in other words, county-wide type services, like police and like fire, should be allocated fully to the GSD, which would be all property owners. Are the tax rates fair and equitable to funded differences in services? Our conclusion is that reallocating costs based upon the level of service would require that the tax rates of each general fund be adjusted based upon the allocations that we're going to show you here in just the next few slides. An example is fire protection. In FY '25, certain costs such as fire protections are currently allocated between the district budgets based upon factors such as a geographical location of stations and personnel not on services provided or benefit received by the properties. This has resulted in over half of the total Metro Fire Protection budget to be allocated to the USD general fund. The USD property owners pay both the USD's and the GSD's general fund fire budgets are receiving the same benefit from fire services relative to the GSD property owners who only pay for the fire budget allocated to the GSD's general fund. Aside from fire, there's no other services provided to both the USD and the GSD property owners that are allocated based upon fiscal allocation of assets and personnel. If you look at the current, the FY '25 budgets, that's how it was in FY '25, you can see that approximately, of that $69.3 million, approximately 41.6% is for solid waste services, which is a USD-only service. It's included in this USD general fund budget line item appropriately. The USD infrastructure and transportation budget funds the USD-only streetlight services, which are in the USD now and were appropriate to be in the USD because GSD properties don't benefit from those street lighting services directly. Fire prevention and control is uniquely allocated between the two districts. As you can see there, about $105 million is allocated to the USD and about $101 million is allocated to the GSD. So the USD properties are paying not only that $105, but they're paying their share of that $101 also. When we look at the reallocation, the conceptual reallocation of the dollars, as you can see there, the fire and law enforcement costs now are all in the GSD. Law enforcement, I mean, the fire prevention is now $206,500 in the GSD, whereas it was split between the two districts before. Solid waste costs and other general government costs that cannot be moved are retained in the USD. And street lighting costs are also retained in the USD. So that's what our recommendation would be in terms of the reallocation costs, reallocation of costs, if you were to be able to reallocate the FY '25 numbers. Other considerations are the USD debt service fund. This analysis assumes that all existing USD debt services to remain in the USD debt service fund to be in compliance with debt service covenants that are pre-existing. However, future projects that are multi-metro-wide services should be funded by the GSD debt service fund. And future projects that specifically benefit USD properties or USD services to be funded by the USD debt service fund. The other consideration is if we're going to move those costs from one district to the other, we should probably move relevant revenues that may offset those costs along with them. And so the revenues that are directly raised to reallocation of fire costs would be fire state shared revenues. And so those have been moved over to the GSD also. All available taxes, licenses, and permits, like business taxes that are available for transfer, excluding alcoholic beverages, groceries, teach tax, which must be retained in the district per the TCA. So we are trying to move all the revenues that we can legally move along with the cost into the GSD if they relate to the same service and can offset the cost in the GSD. That will help mitigate the impact to the property tax rate due to the increased cost in the GSD. The outcomes of the study are as follows. If you look at the, on the left up there is the taxes and rates, tax rates paid by the USD property owner, and on the right is the GSD. If you look at that shaded area, the general fund is paid by both the GSD and the USD property taxes. But the USD general, that's a GSD general fund. The USD general fund is only paid by the USD property owners. What happens with this reallocation is what you can see here. If you look at an average bill or a bill of what we consider to be a typical or average a single-family home with an appraised value of $400,000. On the USD side, the bill would go in 2025 from $3,254, and it would reduce by $12.96. I got to change my glasses with these small numbers for a tax bill of $3,241. On the GSD side, the tax bill of $29.22 for that typical property would increase by $211.51, going to $3,134. The change in those two taxes is that, in the USD, it would be a nominal change, only about a 0.4% reduction in their tax bill. Whereas on the GSD, it would be about a 7.2% increase in the tax bill. That's because of the reallocation of the cost that the USD was paying that they should not have been paying because they're now allocated equally throughout the service area. So each property is paying on those based upon their property values. That same adjusted percentage would be effective no matter the property values. The property impact to the USD and the GSD property owners would need to be, the tax rates would need to be adjusted in each district to properly recover cost in the new adjusted budgets as you move forward into future years. And the GSD property tax would increase while the USD property tax would decrease. I might speak for a moment, I think the next one is questions. But before I do that, let me just speak about one of the issues about cost allocation. me just speak about one of the issues about cost allocation. One of the challenges in this analysis is that you have, you don't have a district here and a district here where you can allocate cost in the district, and this district pays its cost, this district pays its cost. You have overlapping, this district pays not only its cost, but this district's cost also. Police already is allocated to the GSD as a countywide service, and the reallocation happens through the tax rate. And on fire, we were recommending the same thing. When you talk about level of service, when you think about a fire, for instance, this is a good thing to discuss for a moment. I'm from Florida, and we've done a lot, Florida has implemented a state statute and a lot of case law where they can have special assessment districts for fire services in Florida. And the special assessment districts is, for many years, the methodology was a calls-for-service method. They said if this type of property received more calls for service than this type of property, they should receive proportionally more of the cost. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice a little bit. But a few, about seven or eight years ago, there was new law made in Florida where an assessment was proposed that it was based upon benefit, because when you, and assessments need to be based on benefit in Florida. I know you don't have assessments here, but I'm talking about this to demonstrate the whole allocation issues. When you look at a fire department, they're a, they provide a wide-standing service. They have to be prepared with the personnel, the equipment, and the facilities dispersed throughout the county to be able to provide similar levels of service in terms of response time to all the properties. And if you don't ever get a call for service, or you don't ever get a call for service, you're glad, but you still should be paying for that wide-standing service because it's there, ready, willing, and able. And because it's there, you're able to get insurance at reasonable rates with the response times that the department can provide in order to protect the loss of value on your property. So when you think about this, if everybody is paying on a same basis, it's not really the same basis, because the basis that they pay is their property value. So in Florida, this new law basically concluded, or this new method included that you get benefit from fire assessment, from protection from loss on your property, and you can get insurance to protect from that loss. And if the fire department gets adequate notice, they can actually suppress the fire and help protect that loss. And so the benefit really relates to that. And so when you look at, it's not just equal property by property. So if you have a lot more value in the USD, like the seventy-six percent of taxable value that we talked about, they would share collectively more of that cost than the GSD would do. And that law, I mean, that method was approved all the way up through the state supreme court in Florida, and many communities that are considering fire assessments are new, are considering doing it that way. So we believe it's a better way to do it, we believe it's a fair way to do it, and I think, Melissa, unless you have something to add to that, I think we're ready to entertain any questions.
Thank you so very much for that very thorough presentation. We appreciate that information. And colleagues, I did want to give a little context for our first-term colleagues. This conversation started last term, where there was a lot of conversation about USD versus GSD, and is the GSD getting the services that they are paying for? So the study came about because one of our colleagues wanted to make sure that the GSD was getting the services that they are paying for. So we did implement this study, which has now taken about three years to get to this point. So again, thank you so much for sharing this information. It is important that everyone pays their fair share in the services that we're receiving. So we do thank you for this presentation. We'll take questions from committee members first. We'll go to Vice Chair Tooms, then I see Councilmember Allen, then I saw Councilmember Spain, and then I see Evan Segal, and I see Councilmember Eslick, I see Councilmember Evans. I've looked at Councilmember Swor three times, and I don't see her, so I'm going to guess that she doesn't want to be recognized. So that'll be the first round, and we'll see if anyone else has questions after that. So Vice Chair Tooms does not want to be recognized, so we'll start with Councilmember Allen. You're recognized.
Thank you very much for doing this study. It answers a question that lots of folks have wondered about. My question is, you were able to do this sort of retrospectively based on an existing budget. Is this a ratio you can come up with that we can use going forward that will accurately reflect the relative difference or relationship of the services rendered between the two? I mean, now that you've done this, can we sort of assume that going forward, that's a good ratio that we can use?
Well, it's a methodology. I mean, what we're saying is the costs associated with those departments should be in here. So if the budgeted cost in future years are different than what they were in twenty twenty-five, then you would do that allocation in accordance with that method. So I do believe it's very applicable to whatever you are dealing with in FY twenty-six, twenty-seven, as you go forward if you adopt it.
Gotcha. So you've just shown it's not a set ratio, but just put these services in that bucket, and the ratio will work itself out in the numbers?
Exactly.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Spain, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both for being here, and thank you for the presentation. Throughout the final memo and also your presentation, you talk about pension costs and revenues are allocated based on service delivery. I guess maybe we have a different definition of service delivery, and that's what I'm having a hard time getting around, because I asked for some information from MMPD and fire in particular, and in twenty twenty-four, MMPD responded to two-hundred-five-thousand-three-hundred-fifty-eight calls for service, and of those, eighty-one-point-seven percent were dispatched to a location inside the USD, leaving eighteen-point-three in the GSD. And the service times were a little, the response times were a little bit different as well, but not.
Councilmember, can you put the mic up because you're fading?
I'm sorry, thank you. For fire, the numbers are pretty similar. In twenty twenty-four, they responded to one-hundred-fifty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-ninety-three incidents. Of those, eighty-point-nine percent were in the USD, leaving nineteen-point-one in the GSD. So I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around how putting the entire cost of that service in the GSD represents matching those costs with service delivery. Can you help me understand?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll start.
Did you want to answer?
I'll start off. Keep in mind, currently, police is allocated completely to the GSD, so it is not allocated between the two districts. All of those dollars are allocated to the GSD. The USD customers pay into the GSD fund. Currently, USD pays seventy-six percent of the GSD dollars that are allocated to it. So the USD is paying those costs that are allocated to it, which, right now, there's about fifty-one percent of the fire protection that's allocated to USD and forty-nine percent to the GSD. USD customers pay all of the cost to the USD. They also pay all of the, or seventy-six percent of the cost into the GSD. So they are paying for those costs.
Right. I guess what I'm saying is, I think there's an argument to be made that that's appropriate based on the higher level of service that they receive for those services, but I know that's not, that's not your department, but I just want to make sure we're understanding that correctly. Let me ask you.
Can I ask some of that? If you want to go ahead, go ahead, but you're talking about service delivery, basically calls for service is what you're looking at. And the methodology in Florida that's been there for many years is the call-for-service methodology. And the issue with call-for-service methodology is, first off, with your districts the way they are, I'm hard-pressed to see how you can make that work. It would work if they were separate districts that each had their own rates, and they didn't have an overlapping rate, because then you could do it that way. But with this overlapping rate with the USD and the GSD, I would be hard-pressed to see how you could do that. I don't know what legal things would have to happen in Tennessee for you to create a special, two separate fire districts and have a fee-based fee. I mean, that's something that could be looked into, and I think in our study, we did say that would be an option. But short of that, what's happening, I believe, is when you, when you look at, I've done a lot of these studies in Florida, a lot of fire assessments in Florida, I've talked to a lot of fire professionals, fire chiefs, and I ask them the question, I say, if your calls for service dropped fifty percent, would you, how many people would you lay off? They said zero. How many, how much of equipment could you retire? Zero. How many stations or precincts could you close? Zero. Because they said, we have to be ready to go, we have to be, it's a wide-standing service, we have to be ready to serve. So that was some of the impetus for moving to this benefit, this benefit concept with the value of the structures on the property. Now, in Florida, it's the structures, but the taxable value is a pretty good surrogate for that. And taxes are not based upon benefit or cost, they're just taxing, I mean, they're based upon total cost, but they're not based upon a rational allocation of cost, except for the value of the property. And in this case, that kind of lines up a little bit with what we see as the benefit that properties receive from fire service and also probably from police service, but that was already there, so we didn't really delve into that, but the fire service was our recommendation. So we think that, given your structure now and the difficulty in changing your district structure, which you could do if you wanted to pursue that, this, we believe, gives you the fairest application and gets a pretty large share of the fire cost to be borne in the US, in the USD.
Okay, thank you for that. And you sort of segue to my next question. You mentioned in the study, and I think you also mentioned it in your presentation, that in order to provide as much revenue to the GSD to offset the cost of this reallocation, there should be a consideration, or could be a consideration, of merging the USD within the GSD to have a single general fund and debt service fund. Have there been any further conversations or examination of that possibly?
I didn't hear the last thing you said.
I'm reading from the study on page five.
You went out when you were saying merging of the USD and GSD funds. So I believe the question was, has there been any additional conversation about merging the USD and GSD debt service fund? Was that the question?
General fund and debt service fund.
Thank you.
Merging them, I don't have it in front of me, you're talking about us making it this one, one big fund?
That's what this seems to say, but I'm reading from your report.
Well, in essence, in essence, that's kind of what we said in terms of the fire, put it all in the big countywide fund. But I don't think you, I don't know what the legal barriers to you to just have one big fund for the county would be. Again, we were dealing with your structure as it is today, so.
So there haven't been any further conversation about that?
No.
That's, yeah, that's fine. Let me skip to the end then. On the, I'm on the last page, on page eleven, on observations and conclusions, and the report talks about next steps, and the report being presented to Metro Finance for review and consideration, then it talks about there could be further presentations to the administration or elected officials, implementation timelines, further study of potential districts that we're talking about. Have any of those things happened that you're aware of?
They have not, no.
Okay, thank you. So I guess maybe my last question is for finance, because this final memo is dated April twenty-fourth, which is a week before the mayor's budget was submitted, and I'm curious about the process between how we got this and a week later it being fully baked into the budget without any further conversations about the potential impacts or discussions about maybe how that should be done or a timeline, that sort of thing.
Thank you, Councilmember Spain. Do we have someone from finance that could address that?
Hi there, Amanda Deaton-Moyer, Department of Finance. The original, so this is actually a phase two. This study was the phase one with mostly, most of the same observations was actually provided this time last year, actually a little earlier in March. And so as we were working through and preparing for this budget, we had been working with Raftellus closely, and so they finalized it as we were finalizing the budget. So we did feel as though we had, we had, this had been communicated from this time last year, but also we're glad to answer questions now. This is actually the continuation. We really wanted to make sure Raftellus got in front of you and said that you did have apt time to answer, ask questions and go back and forth, and we're fielding those today, and we'll continue to do so.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Spain. Next, we have Councilmember Evan Segal, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I think Councilmember Allen essentially got to my question, which is, we hear a lot of people in the USD say, well, I don't actually get solid waste service, I live in an apartment, or I live in an SP or PUD or some sort of HOA, and so I have to pay separately for my solid waste, but I'm also paying taxes, so I'm double paying for solid waste. We now have formed a solid waste department, and we're looking at how people pay for that. So if and when we change how people pay for solid waste, then we would just reallocate the formula based on how that's paid for? Is that correct?
Sorry. Yeah, currently, the solid waste costs are included in that first line item that you saw, I think it's called general government, and it contains a pretty big chunk of solid waste, about forty-one-point-six million dollars. As you transition to potentially an enterprise fund or however it is that you decide to fund it, that would be based on, typically based on a fee-based structure, and those revenues would kind of go away from property taxes.
Thank you, Councilmember Evan Segal. Are there any other budget and finance committee members that would like to be recognized? Okay, seeing none, we'll go with Councilmember Eslick, followed by Councilmember Evans, followed by Councilmember Ellis. Are there any non-budget and finance committee members that would also like to be recognized? Okay, Councilmember Eslick, you're recognized.
Thank you. I read this and really kind of tried to dig into it pretty deeply. One thing I think we're not saying here is that seventy-eight percent of the people are of Davidson County are in the USD. So when you talk about it paying in seventy-six percent or seventy-two percent, that's about where it should be, if that's the population there. As a person that has an all-GSD district, I know how little resources we have in our area, and how many of those are pulled away toward the USD when they get the calls to, especially with police. And I know there's not a difference in the USD/GSD when it comes to the police. However, it looks like it took a couple of years to get this thing together, but when it comes to the actual data that shows, you know, why this ought to be this way, there were two main things used. One was talking to metro employees, and the other was policy-level observations. That's no metric, that's no metrics, that's no real data, and if you talk about the formula, we keep talking about this formula, it's basically move everything onto GSD except for trash and streetlights. And with that, you come up with a difference of about two-hundred-and-eleven dollars per year. I'm going to go ahead and tell you, I'm, there's no way you're going to get your trash picked up all year for that and have streetlights in your area. And no one mentioned the sidewalks that we don't have in the GSD compared to the amount in the USD, which makes more walkability and more benefits. There are more parks, there are more amenities in the USD available in a shorter, walkable or drivable area than there is here. So I really don't see how taking all of it and just moving it over and saying services are the same, when we don't even talk about usage in this. And for me, I feel like this is being pushed in real quick without us being able to vet it, without us being able to, I don't want to go granular, but maybe we can go rock or gravel and figure out a little better idea of how the usage is actually dispersed here. I don't want to cost any, you know, amenities or services for our area. At the same time, I don't want to take a two-hundred-and-eleven-dollar hit and get actually exactly the same or less than I was getting before, or before, and I don't think my district would like that as well. So what thought went behind just those two means of understanding the scope of this? Talking to metro employees and policy-level observations? I'm not even sure I know what a policy-level observation looks like when it comes to something like this, but it doesn't seem that there was a lot of digging into it. It was more like casual overlook.
Well, first off, the district structure makes doing a usage or calls for service or what, you know, you were talking about sidewalks, difficult because of the overlapping nature of the USD and the GSD. And when we spoke to the fire folks here in the city, we were assured that the level of services, the response time is very similar throughout the county. I know there'll be anomalies here and there, of course there might be. And given that, we felt like the best way to do this, to solve it, without you going to create new separate districts to do what you would like to do, and maybe that's what you ultimately would want to do, the best solution is to put the countywide services in the district where everybody in the county pays, and then they pay in proportion to their property values. So if there's more property being bought in one district than the other, it would get a bigger allocation of the cost by virtue of that mechanism. And so that was the thought process that went through it. If we went through a lot of machinations about usage and evaluating sidewalks... If we went through a lot of machinations about usage and evaluating sidewalks and evaluating calls for service with no way to really implement it, I mean, that could be done, I guess, if you wanted to, but it didn't seem to us that it was the proper way to go when we had a situation that would be very difficult for you to change, and we needed to work within the construct of that. And, you know, I have thought about this a lot and struggled with how we would take, you know, a resources-based approach and adequately make it happen, because if you allocated, if you took what you two gentlemen kind of were saying similarly to the extreme, you would allocate to the GSD and to the USD separately. But the USD then has to share in the cost in the GSD. So it's just, it's a difficult solution to come through with the district.
I think the issue, though, is how services received is kind of used in context as services used or consumed, when in the way it's written, it's actually availability. And so I'm paying the same amount for availability that the USD may be using or getting in usage. And there is a difference, and I think you understand my point, that oversimplifying by just throwing everything at it is one option, but so is trying to find a real medium. And I'll just say, inside and outside the USD is how I describe it, based on the GSD being the whole thing. So the inside the USD on this way is getting a tax break, and it's shifting to the 28% that live outside the GSD or USD.
When you look at the current thought and methodologies, and it's not your state, but it's Florida, where it's done a lot, the thought is that the benefit comes from the availability of the service. You hope against hope that you don't ever have a fire truck come to your home or your business, but you get benefit from the fact that they're there and they're ready to serve you 24/7, 365 days a year. So that was a concept we were looking at. Now, if you wanted to pursue a more resources calls for service kind of an approach, I think we would need to look at how we would be able to restructure the districts. I don't know how you could do it if you just allocated these to GSD and these to USD, then USD is going to pay them both. So, and if you did want to look into having two separate districts for certain services like fire, I mean, that would be something, I guess, that you would need, we would need to seek your legal folks, and I don't really know. I imagine it would take some legislative actions. I'm really not sure what it would take, but it is something that you could actually pursue if you thought.
And these questions and these options are the reason that I'll be asking to defer this out of the budget for one year so that we can look through it and get a better idea. Instead of 100 and putting everything into the GSD, what would be a better number based on calculations of usage? And again, if we have to make some type of other map drawing or some other type of ordinance to address it, that'll give us 12 months to do so.
That's a fair statement, but I will say this. I haven't done the analysis on calls for service, but if you did it, I mean, the USD is already paying 76% of the total fire budget.
It has 72% of the population, though. So it's tracking.
That's right, and that's fair. That's why I think this is, this is fair, because it's not only tracking from the property values, but also from the people or the parcels that would be receiving the services at any rate.
The 72% is irrelevant based on it matching the population. So it's not as if it's 25% in the USD paying 76%. It's 72% paying 76%. So it's relatively equal.
My point is, this method already has them paying a percentage that's proportional to their size relative.
Councilmember, if you could let him finish, I will turn your mic back on so you can speak once he's finished talking. If you could please finish speaking, Ralph.
It just seems like it's proportionate to me in terms of how it's allocated. I'm not saying it would be exactly the same if you did a resources-based analysis, but to me, it seems like it's as close as you can get with the current district structure.
Councilmember Eastlick, would you like to follow up? No? Okay, thank you. And for our colleagues that are primarily based in the GSD, I hear your frustration. I understand how frustrating this is, just, you know, don't know if this is helpful, but just to put it in perspective, I live in the USD. I have never called fire, and, you know, over 20 years now that I've lived in the GSD, I've never called fire, but I'm still paying for those fire services. And as of last week, my kid has graduated from MNPS, but my tax dollars are still going to be paying for our school system, and this is the way that every other service, parks, NDOT, like every other service that we pay for, is this is the same way that it's being funded. So I hear the frustration and also just want to put that in perspective. We have Councilmember Evans and Councilmember Quinn Evan Segal. We're going to let her jump since she's on the committee, y'all, so I'm going, you don't want to, okay. We'll do Evans, Ellis, and then Evan Segal. She was kind to not skip y'all. Councilmember Evans, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I also don't, I have people that don't want to pay for education either, though, so it definitely is all aligned. I appreciate you all being here. I think my question is really more for the administration table. So it feels like, and I'm thinking about like the technical side of what's in the report versus the spirit of the situation that residents are feeling, kind of related to their frustration. And it feels like basically we're being annexed into the USD without the extensive community engagement opportunities that have been afforded to other communities, and it's not happening directly with this budget because we're only three cents difference, but by the next one, we're definitely there. We're at a level playing field where there's not going to be a difference between the two. And so thinking ahead to the next person that's in my seat and what they'll be facing, how are we planning ahead for the services like maybe trash is not really something to even calculate at this point because of the potential consideration around waste management and kind of some of those changes, but in particular, streetlights, sidewalks, those kinds of things where there's a direct connection to how we have always handled implementation of those services, where you're paying ahead and then getting the service, you know, like I'm thinking ahead about like, you know, we're paying three cents or whatever it is for a year prior to like getting streetlights installed and that kind of thing. So I'm just looking for some, what's the light at the end of the tunnel that potentially can get residents to kind of wrap their minds around this?
Thank you, Councilmember Evans. And that question was directed to, was it administration or finance? Okay. From, I don't see anyone here from administration, but we do have finance here. If, oh, sorry, I didn't see you. My computer's blocking you. Okay, you are recognized. If you could introduce yourself, please.
Kristin Wilson, Chief of Operations and Performance. I'm not quite sure I understood your question. I'm sorry, Councilmember Evans, in terms of planning for streetlight changes into the future and how that might intersect with the...
Because in four years, we will not have a difference. If we're only at three cents difference now, in four years, we're not going to have a difference. And so typically, if we were being annexed, you know, into the USD, like in the traditional way, we would have a plan, like a year in advance, you'd start paying kind of that tax increase, but maybe the service wouldn't be implemented until after we've kind of collected those funds. And so I don't know if we have thought around that, and I know it's early to ask, but I need to start talking about what that looks like.
This is Janine Reed, Director of Finance. I think that's a great question, and it's a fair question and something that we will definitely, you know, talk about and discuss. We see your point and we're talking about it, and it's definitely something we should consider. The only other thing I do want to say really briefly, which hasn't been brought up yet, is about when you talk about USD and the three cents and whatnot, I just want to remind everybody, in the budget this year, we are using fund balance in the USD this year. Therefore, that levy in the USD looks smaller because we are using USD. The other thing that happened in USD this year is that the GPP funding, which is the Guaranteed Payment Plan for the pension, that funding didn't have to happen in FY26 either. And so what you're seeing as a significant reduction in that levy in USD, next year, that levy portion in the USD will go up slightly because we will not have as much fund balance to utilize in the USD next year. So there's a lot of complication, you know, it's not just an easy, quick calculation. So I just wanted to walk through those few little nuances this year.
And Chair, it's not directly budget-related, but I'll also say, like in the GSD, we can't have liquor stores, and so at some point, there will have to be a conversation around, like if our levy does become the same, like us obviously being able to have a cocktail. Thank you.
I think many of us need one after this conversation, so thank you, Councilmember Evans. Councilmember Ellis, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm going to opt for something a little bit stronger, but I have a question just about, so I wanted to get my head around the logic of this study. Chair, you had referenced the making sure that we're all paying our fair share. Could you all just repeat, what was the context of this study being commissioned three years ago?
Yeah, I'll give context to that, and then if we have, Dr. Darby wasn't here three years ago, so I don't know if, so I'll expert our second termers to fact-check me here with some head nods or thumbs up. One of our colleagues expressed concern that members of the, that constituents of the GSD were paying taxes, but they weren't getting enough services. So the thought was that the GSD was paying too much in taxes. So the study was done to see if the GSD was paying too much in taxes, but the study actually found out the GSD was paying too little in taxes. So now it is opposite of what was thought.
Thank you for breaking that down. And to clarify, the services that were studied, fire and solid waste, are those the only services that are the difference of what's been, like, I don't understand why it was those two services.
So fire was, oh, and I should probably let y'all answer. I'll let you all answer this. Go ahead. No? Okay.
Well, no, I can answer it. So fire was, is, right now, your transportation and your police are all allocated to the GSD fund, and both the USD and the GSD pays for that fund. The only service really with fire protection, it was split between the two different funds. It was split between the USD and the GSD fund. 51% went to the USD, 49% went to the GSD. And then what was happening was the USD was paying 51% of the cost, fire costs that were allocated to them, and then 76% of the fire costs that were allocated to the GSD. So what we determined was, if you're going to treat transportation and police as kind of one-service-wide kind of delivery, right, it's the same benefit for everyone, the transportation, the police, why are we not treating fire that way? It is the same benefit. Everyone gets the same benefit. If you call the fire department, the fire department's going to respond. They're going to drive across boundaries. People in the USD, the fire are going to drive to the GSD, vice versa. It's the same benefit. So why are we not allocating that, similar to police and similar to transportation, allocating it all to the GSD? Now, the progressive nature of your taxes, even with allocating all of those costs to the GSD, because the USD and the GSD both pay into that GSD, USD pays 76% of those costs. Costs in the USD tend to be more expensive, so they get a bigger share of those costs. They're paying 76% of those costs that are allocated to the GSD. I heard a metric earlier. We did not get into metrics, but I thought I heard 80% of the calls were going to the USD. If you think about the costs that are being allocated to the GSD and the, what the USD is actually paying towards the GSD, it's 76%. Those ratios are not that different, so...
Okay, thank you. I don't want to fan the flames of my colleague. So how complex would it be to study the breakdown of the other services that are provided? So say, for instance, if I wanted to see in District 29, Smith Springs, Priest Lake, if I get the same amount of monies from NDOT for sidewalks as, say, Green Hills?
I think that would be a question for finance or administration. The question was, if she wanted to see how much her district got from the NDOT budget for like sidewalks as opposed to how much money was being spent in Green Hills for sidewalks, how could she get that information?
Hi, this is Kristin Wilson, Chief of Operations.
Hey, bud.
How are you? We're going to do our best to get you an answer on that. One of the challenges that can occur in department budgets and capital spending is some of the projects are just, that they have line item-wise, are countywide, right? Like you might have a building that serves the entire county, and so you don't always, we can't always allocate specific to a district, but for something like, specific like sidewalks, we could pull those numbers for you.
And is that something that you all would do, or would it be, say, for instance, if we were to get it deferred for a year, is that something that they could take on so that you all wouldn't have that worry?
This is a capital spending plan item, so it's not operating budget, other than when it comes through, and I'll look at my finance colleagues, the debt service side. And so we can get you the capital spending breakout already. I don't think that needs to wait for a year.
And Councilmember Ellis, if you also could work with Ms. Wilson on that question, on that, to get a little more specific on the ask, because some of the sidewalks too, so for example, if you're talking about Smith Springs Road, would be in District 29, but it could also run into District 8 or District 13, depending on where it is in the, you know, on Smith Springs Road. So some of those are, some of them are countywide, but then some things are also like cross-district. So if you could work with Ms. Wilson to get a better understanding of exactly what it is you're wanting, that would be helpful.
Yeah, thank you. And I just sort of threw sidewalks out there because it seems as if, when it comes to like sidewalks or where different services are used or expensed from the different metro departments, that it's more so metrics that are developed by the metro department heads to meet those needs as opposed to like a countywide service like fire. So, but thank you. Oh, one more question. I did want to take advantage of the expertise in the room, if you will indulge me, Chair. Is it, I know you all have experience working in other states, would it be possible for MNPS to have their own source of revenue, like have a local tax in place to fund their portion of the budget? Have you guys seen that anywhere?
For police?
No, for MNPS.
Our school system.
Metro public schools.
Oh, we didn't, we haven't evaluated the schools, and I'm really not familiar with the setup of that, so I would have to look into what your question is.
I believe it varies from state to state, so I'm not familiar with the state of Tennessee and what the restrictions and the regulations are.
Okay, cool. Thanks, thought I'd ask.
Do we want? Director Darby is going to send you some follow-up information to answer that question, Councilmember Ellis. I saw Councilmember Webb, I had Councilmember Quinn Evan Segal, I saw Councilmember Webb. Was there anyone else that wanted to be recognized? And Vice Chair Toomes, okay. Councilmember Evan Segal, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I think this is sort of a follow-up of a question that I actually had a year and a couple of months ago, when the first letter came out with some folks in finance who aren't here anymore. So I think this is kind of probably a new question to folks at the table. I think my understanding is there has to be a rational basis for differing tax rates. And now that we have this study, is there any concern that if we don't adopt a revised tax rate, that we don't have a rational basis for the current rate structure and therefore are open to suit under like an equal protection claim or some other claim? And that may not be answerable today, but, you know, to the extent it is, great. Otherwise, an answer later would be great.
Thank you, Councilmember Evan Segal. Did y'all want to take a stab at that, or did y'all want to follow up?
We have, hi there, Amanda, Department of Finance. We have discussed that, but we'd really prefer to get you some legal advice on that because the rational basis is really, as you know, a term we need to be very careful about talking through.
Thank you so very much. Councilmember Webb, you are recognized.
My question is for somebody over there in the important corner over there. I know she talked about sidewalks. I want to know about fire hydrants, because on my street, I don't even have a fire hydrant. So what would the infrastructure cost for it to... So what would the infrastructure cost for it to be in the GSD to have the same distance for our houses as it is in the USD? That's a big one, I know.
I am going to turn on the mic for the admin table. Okay, you're recognized.
Hi there, Amanda Deaton-Moyer, Department of Finance. So, hi there. When it comes to fire hydrants, there is an aspect of fire, but really it's also an, it's a water services concept and the availability of water services. And so we'd actually have to talk to, um, the Department of Water and see what is necessary and, and whether the need is there. I mean, I'm not saying there's not, I'm just saying that they'll have sizing of pipes and, and, and what's available in the service lines and so forth to determine that. And the fire department will also have something to say about whether the distance is necessary to, based on, um, the services that need to be provided. But we can look into that, that's, that's a fun kind of question.
Thank you for that question, councilmember Webb. And Vice Chair Tooms, I'm on, uh, I'm going to go to you next and then we'll go to councilmember Ellis. Uh, Vice Chair Tooms, you're recognized.
Thank you Chair. Hopefully this doesn't have to be said, but I'm going to say it anyway. We have to vote on a tax rate every year that is required by the charter. Um, I understand that there's discussion whether or not, you know, the difference between the mayor's proposed rate and the certified tax rate, uh, but if you are adjusting that ta, that tax rate, be ready to get your red pen out to cut some stuff. So I just wanted to make sure folks are aware of that, like we have to pass a tax rate. Like there's no deferring voting on a tax rate. Just wanted to put that out there Chair.
Thank you, thank you Vice Chair. Uh, councilmember, uh, Ellis, and then we'll go to, uh, councilmember Allen. Councilmember Ellis, you're recognized.
Thank, thank you for, uh, laying the runway for my question, councilmember Tooms. Uh, Mr. Pratt, if, uh, since we really, since we don't have money to play with in the 4% fund, uh, when we submit our wish list items and we want to, uh, cut some FTEs or some of the other proposals from the different departments, is it a requirement that we, uh, do that due diligence, uh, submission form or can we just submit it to you?
Thank you, councilmember Ellis. That is, you would do that through the wish list form. So what you would need to do is you would say which department you want to cut the FTEs from. And my ask to you all is that you would have a conversation with that department because we do not, uh, we can suggest that that is what we want to cut, but it's up to the department head to say what they want to cut. So just for an example, a few years ago, we looked at a particular department and we said, I believe it was councilmember Tooms and myself and a couple of others, um, said that we wanted to cut some FTEs and that department head said, if you cut this amount in my budget, these are the programs that are going to get cut. We're not cutting FTEs. So because departments serve at the pleasure of the mayor, they don't respond to, they are not, um, obligated to make the cuts in the way that council members want us to make the cuts. So the idea is that you have a conversation with the department head to say, hey, department, I am looking at, or you know, I'm looking at submitting a wish list request that we're going to cut your department by X amount of FTEs or X amount of money. How would that impact your department? So that you can hear from the department head what services that would impact if they're actually going to cut FTEs or what they're going to look at. And also, uh, Mr. Pratt did also share with us that the FTEs are used to actually balance out the budget. So even though a department has FTEs, they're using those savings to actually make their budget each year. Did I explain that correctly, uh, Mr. Pratt? Are y'all proud of me? I see finance smiling. They're very proud over there. Um, so they are actually using that to make their, uh, department budget every year. So, so cutting FTEs is not actually cutting FTEs, if that makes sense.
It does, thank you Chair.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Allen and then councilmember Spain, you're recognized.
Thank you. Just one quick follow-up to the, um, recommendation and the, uh, agreement was made to sort of look into some other services that may not necessarily be equally applied in the GSD, which I would ask if that also includes sanitary sewer and possibly storm sewer? And I don't know if because those come from water and it's its own enterprise fund, if that doesn't figure into it or, but you know, are there other things that we, we in the past have said, well, if you live in the GSD, these are the things that you don't have? And sidewalks was mentioned, but do those other two also fall into that category?
No, that for Amanda Deaton-Moyer, Department of Finance, um, for, for both stormwater and water sewer, cost of services are done and they are based on availability. And I mean, you don't want to turn on your spigot and not have water come out. And so, um, you know, similar to the conversation we were having with, um, councilmember Webb, it, we'll have to, I mean, we can look at that, but it's always about availability and, and so forth and so, and that's done through a very detailed cost of service, um, analysis.
Thank you so very much. Councilmember Spain, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, I, I hope I'm not risking losing my reputation for conciseness. I'll be quick, but to, to Vice Chair Tooms' point, I'm wondering if finance has done any sort of analysis on what it would look like if you didn't implement the results of the study? So either what the increase to the tax rate would have to be to generate the same amount of revenue that's in the current budget before us, or how much less revenue that would generate?
Director Reed, you're recognized.
Hello, Janine Reed, Finance Director. I, I actually have talked to our legal department, Metro Legal, and basically because we actually have a study done, um, from professionals, this has been a two or three year long study process that was, you know, recommended by council and finance has done, and Rotholos has done a great job on that. But because of the recommendation, allocating the expenses among the tax districts, which is resulting in adjustments to tax rates based off of legal's opinion and our consultation with legal, we are implementing the USD-GSD study. If we don't implement it, there is risk to Metro because we actually have a study that gives us an opinion about the allocation of those expenses. We need to implement the study. So I, I, I was hoping legal would be here. I'm happy to have, you know, some, someone from legal come and talk about this at, you know, another working session. I'm sorry they weren't here today, but, um, but that's, that is, we, we have consulted with Metro Legal about not implementing the study and there is risk for Metro.
Thank you for that. And I would like to hear from Metro about that if we have the opportunity because regardless of how long it's taken to get this study done, we still received the final report a week before the budget was submitted. So I find it hard to believe that we're submitting, that we're opening up ourselves to legal vulnerability in that timeframe, but.
Yep. And, and I understand your frustration, I really do, about you actually getting the study like a week before. But this process has been ongoing for several years and there was an initial study that was issued to council last year in March. And that study is almost exactly like the final study in terms of its recommendation for the cost allocation specifically around fire. So, um, so I hope, I apologize if that was news to any of you, but, but that, that study was issued last March and I apologize again that it came a week before the budget. But, um, that's because we didn't get the final technical memo. Um, you know, it is a technical memo. There was a lot of reviewing that went on. It was not just a, we're doing this on a whim. We reviewed the data, we looked at the data, they've talked to Metro Fire. Um, you, if you came to the Metro Fire Department Budget Hearing, LeAnn and Fire both opined that the services are provided equally across the GSD. And so based off of that information, the information we have, the study from consultation with legal, we did implement this study in the budget in FY26.
Thank you.
And happy to have other conversations.
Thank you Director Reed. Um, and since councilmember Spain is asking for a legal opinion on it, I don't know, um, if legal will be able to come and opine on that, but Director Darby, can legal send us, um, can, can we get a memo or something or? Okay, so there may already be a, a communication from legal to finance about this that we could look at, get and share with council members. And we can also follow up to determine if legal can come to a meeting to address any questions.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Spain. Uh, seeing no one else in the queue, making direct eye contact with councilmember Soror, my eye is twitching. Seeing no one else in the queue, uh, meeting, oh, before we adjourn this meeting, as a reminder, tomorrow, we will be right back here in the chambers and we will have the pay plan presentation. And then on Thursday, that is when we will start addressing the budget wish list items. So that will be Thursday downstairs in the jury assembly room from 4:00 to 5:30 PM. And then, uh, going into next week, obviously we have our budget, uh, budget committee meeting on Monday, council meeting on Tuesday, and then we'll pick back up with budget work sessions, uh, next week on Wednesday. And with that colleagues, we are adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.